All right, excuse me. I'd like to call this caller December 12th, 2022 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Adam, you call the roll.
Ms. Huffman?
Here.
Mrs. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. LaValette?
Here.
Mr. Gregg Feller?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, what's that?
Good evening, everyone. Our item 2.1 this evening, it is our pleasure to have a presentation from Students Demand Action. More specifically, we have Nina Greenberg here with us this evening along with some of her student colleagues and peers and also joining her in her presentation are Moms Demand Action. Board members, we did recently email this presentation to you probably about 10 or 15 years ago, so you will not need to swing your chairs around if you want to look at it on your phone or from your Chromebook, or feel free to... Did I say school board?
You said years.
10 or 15 years. Oh, 10 or 15 minutes, not years. We're not that old. That's funny.
I can't access that.
But Nina, thank you for coming with your team here tonight and presenting to our board on this important matter, and I think we have some folks here, would they like to introduce themselves after you speak, or we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. My name is Nina Greenberg. I'm a senior at Southview, and I would love to have all of the lovely people that came with me today introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Bailey Rakoff.
My name is Carly McMahon.
My name is Emmy Rindler.
Karen Stramel.
Erin Kramer.
Donna Malone from Moms Demand Action.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ramirez. I'm the Educational Lead with Moms Demand Action.
Judy Harbaugh, Moms Demand Action.
Tyvon Barnes.
Sheena Barnes, Student Liaison.
Thank you all so much. I want to thank you all for letting me join you today and give this presentation. Thank you to all of the lovely volunteers that came out today. We're all here to ask you to oppose a recent piece of legislation allowing schools in Ohio to arm teachers. So just as a little bit of background, House Bill 99 was passed over the summer. It's specific to Ohio, and it's a piece of legislation that allows teachers to have guns in schools as a way to combat mass shootings in schools. Now, the three things that I want to address with you today are the current environments surrounding gun violence in schools, how this resolution, excuse me, how this piece of legislation in arming teachers would affect students through accidental shootings, and then how this legislation would impact teachers as well as school resource officers and law enforcement. Starting with this graph, I hope you guys can see that. The majority of the graph is taken by mass shootings, but the significant portion that I want to highlight is the 20% that is accounted for through unintentional shootings. If we were to arm teachers, we would see that number significantly increase, and it may even overtake that largest portion of mass shootings. Another piece to note is that 12% of school gun violence is attributed to suicides. The facts have shown that an increased presence of guns in a young person's life, or for that matter, anyone's life, increases the risk that they will use a firearm to commit suicide. Now, I want to reiterate that 20% and that 12%, but I also want to mention the fact that school shooters, 58% of the time, have a relation to the school that they commit a shooting at, and 91% of those shooters are current or former students. Now, I'd like you to remember that 91% statistic for later in the presentation as it comes into play a little bit later. Before I tell you about the research that I have gathered on why this is a bad idea, I feel like I should mention the fact that there's no research to support the idea of arming teachers. There's absolutely no fact, no study that supports that arming teachers is an effective solution to reducing mass shootings in our state. First of all, adding guns to schools would increase the chances of accidental shootings. Accidental shootings include when a gun accidentally discharges from a teacher's holster or any matter of the sort that is similar to that. These shootings would put students at risk, and it may even put teachers at risk as it may harm themselves. The facts have also shown that the vast majority of unintentional shootings with younger children involve when a child shoots another child. So should this gun get in the hands of a younger child per se in an elementary school, we could be looking at a curious younger child who ends up shooting their classmate, and we're ending up with a lot of death on our hands. Secondly, it increases student access to guns. So that same premise of students getting a hold of guns can apply to any range of student. Guns could be left in bathrooms, on desks, and wherever they are, whenever they are not specifically on a teacher, a student could get their hands on those guns, which raises questions about where weapons should be stored. And just to mention, there is no proven foolproof way to store a gun at this moment. The facts have also shown that access to a gun triples the rate of gun suicide and doubles the risk of homicide. Now to move on, how this resolution, excuse me, how this legislation would impact teachers, I want to mention that teachers and law enforcement officers do not support this legislation. Both the National Educators Association and the American Federation of Teachers alongside the National Association of School Resource Officers and Major Cities Police Chief Association agree this is a bad idea. Nobody wants guns in schools. The people who are to have these guns don't want them. In fact, quote, one of the representatives of the major cities police chief programs said, quote, "The more guns that are coming into the equation equals a greater risk that someone is going to get hurt." Teachers already have a lot of responsibility in their current jobs. It's hard to expect them to kill a former student. Let's reference back to that 91% of school shooters who are current or former students. Talk to any teacher, they'll tell you that they love their students almost like their own children. It's very hard to ask a student to kill what feels like a child to them, someone that is so close to them, in such a split-second decision. Secondly, teachers have minimal training. As I mentioned before, this resolution only requires 24 hours of training for teachers. Others that operate guns on a daily basis have hundreds of hours. Officers that do have that 100 hours plus of training said that they see their ability to accurately take down an active shooter significantly decreased in such a high-stress situation. So consider a teacher that has only had 24 hours, we're looking at a very, very miniscule accuracy in this type of situation. They could not respond as quickly or as accurately as a police officer, which puts themselves in the face of danger. And then in a study of 160 active shooter incidents, only one was successful in an armed civilian interference. In this case, the teacher acts as the armed civilian, so it's not very successful. Also, we already asked a lot of teachers. Teachers have a lot of responsibility. So in addition to maintaining that gun at all times, making sure that a student never gets a hold of that gun, they have to make sure that all of the students in their classroom are behaving, are learning in an effective manner. It's a lot to ask them to be a teacher and a security guard simultaneously. Finally, many police officers and law enforcement agencies have mentioned the difficulty that they find with an increased presence of guns while they are trying to take down an active shooter. Officers said they don't know where the gunfire is coming from, and they may unintentionally shoot a teacher because they are contributing to that gunfire. An armed teacher is more likely to shoot a student bystander than they are an active shooter. And from a Dallas police chief, quote, "We don't know who the good guy is, first the bad guy when everyone starts shooting." So finally, I want to find a solution, but unfortunately, the solution is not arming teachers. The problem we were supposed to address in the first place is children and staff dying. This just increases the amount of death that we're going to see in our school and defeats the purpose entirely. We want to keep our students and our staff safe. Thank you, and please consider signing this resolution and opting out of arming teachers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you giving us that presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to thank you, Nina. I think that was a great presentation. I would say for me, I would never consider arming teachers. I think it's dangerous. I think it's absolutely the wrong answer. 24 hours of training isn't enough, and even with more training, I think you're right. No teacher wants to shoot a child, and it just increases the danger in our schools. So thank you. Thank you for advocating that one. You did a great job. Very proud that you represent Slovenia schools.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, we do have a policy already on the books, 3217, that prohibits firearms on our campuses, so I think we're supporting that.
And we actually just passed that in the last couple of months.
Right.
And we specifically discussed the fact that there was a new law when we decided to stick with the policy that we have now. And the reason we stuck with our policy is because we don't, I mean, the majority agreed that we needed to keep guns out of the school. So, and I also want to reiterate that I'm very proud of you. You're amazing, and the presentation was wonderful, and thank you for bringing us this information.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the first opportunity for public participation for agenda items, and seeing none, Dr. Motley, we are with you.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. I recommend item 4.1, which is a presentation this evening by Dr. Casey Vence, who is here to present a special award. Welcome, Dr. Vence.
Thank you, everyone. Southview has a history of outstanding extracurricular teams, but our mock trial team is undoubtedly our flagship program. While we may get individuals and teams that are occasionally competitive at the state level or in other arenas, our mock trial team is consistently among the best in the state, nation, and even the world. The decades-long success can be directly attributed to the dedication and mentorship of our volunteer coach, Vicki Lyle, and her husband Denny, but we're focusing on Vicki tonight. As the building principal these past six years, I've had the opportunity to ask the participants some questions about their experience on the team. Their responses indicate that the program is best defined by intense practice sessions that often last all day and night, and the diversity of the team's membership. Through area demonstrations for groups like the Slovenia Rotary and online competitions, I have witnessed a team that is always polished. Their confidence and professionalism stems from the way in which Vicki has a team extensively researched and analyzed cases and rehearsed roles until they are second nature. Additionally, the team is always composed of students from diverse backgrounds and various levels of academic achievement. Vicki's approach is inclusive. She and Denny open their home for weekend practices and organize team dinners to celebrate their victories. Every student, regardless of his or her role and circumstances, is made to feel part of the mock trial family under Vicki's warm-hearted coaching and tutelage. Vicki's mock, sorry, Southview's mock trial accomplishments are in a class by themselves, and our success is a result of Vicki's vast knowledge base and motherly coaching. During the 25-plus years she has coached, we have won eight state titles, finished in the nation's top 10 on four occasions, and were crowned world champions in 2013. A local principal familiar with the team's success said it best when he called her irreplaceable, and I couldn't agree more. When she walks away, Southview's team will never be the same. It is with great honor that I would like to acknowledge Vicki Lyle on behalf of the Slovenia School District. She was recently chosen as the Lori Ergdye Eiler Award recipient. The award aims to recognize a mock trial coach whose dedication and selflessness, as well as their knowledge and skills, make a difference in the lives of students. Recipients inspire their teams and demonstrate the ability to connect with team members as individuals. Well, that's Vicki times 100, as the kids say. And now I would like to yield time to Dan Greenberg, who's also going to say a few words on behalf of Vicki.
Thanks, Casey. On behalf of the 575 Slovenia teachers who are members of the Slovenia Education Association, I want to offer sincere, great congratulations to you, Vicki, on receiving the Eiler Award for your leadership and dedication to mock trial. As a parent of a former mock trial participant who just stood in front of you, I have seen your dedication to the program, the hours you have put into building relationships with students, and the pride and joy you have taken when the Southview team has won competitions and when individual students have excelled. That passion and dedication for being all-in for the team, as a board member, you exhibited these same qualities. You changed the culture of the school district as you gave teachers the space to come to you and other board members with concerns about the district, and you worked collaboratively with teachers and administrators to meet the challenges we faced. You voted in favor of resolutions like the one in 2012 against the overuse and misuse of standardized testing. You spoke at community forums about the importance of supporting public education. You traveled to Columbus with teachers and administrators to meet with legislators to push for policies at the state level that would help students in our schools. Almost six years ago to the day, you participated in a three-day cultural competency training that would never have taken place without your involvement and your advocacy. For many of the teachers here in the room, and in the room at the time, it was and continues to be the best and most meaningful professional development we've ever had, and the district continues to experience positive effects from the training, which again, never would have occurred without your push for it to happen. Your impact and legacy on Slovenia schools as a board member and a mock trial coach are evident and long-lasting, and thank you for your service in both roles. Thank you for your tireless work for students, teachers, and the school district. Thank you for being a friend.
Vicki, will you come up here and accept this award?
We should get a picture. Can we take five minutes? This is done, do I go up? Just take a quick break. Just take a three-minute break. Thank you. Thank you for the words. Thank you, Dan. Sincerely appreciate it.
I would like to add to those. I mean, I'm not as eloquent as Casey or Dan, but you know, I've had, I had the honor of serving with Vicki, and I've had the honor of helping with mock trial and watching Vicki and Denny, you know, with those kids. They're tireless, and you know, Denny usually gets all the accolades, but I would say Vicki is the heart of that program, and those kids are so lucky, and this district is so lucky for what you've given to those kids for the last several decades. You're just amazing, and you're so deserving of that award, and congratulations.
We have another special recognition tonight. We have recognition of Susie Felver for securing $1.15 million in grant funding for our school's safety and security. And Susie, if you would join me here at the podium.
This is just the most feel-good meeting.
Here is our prestigious Gold Star Award. You are the first one. But I need to share a few things, so I'm going to make you blush a little bit, but Susie has been with the Slovenia School Safety and Security Committee for about eight years now, is my understanding, and she truly has demonstrated a sense of deep commitment, value, and dedication to our Slovenia schools, not only as Principal of Accord, newly appointed last spring, but now as a successful grant writer many times over. Governor Dwyane and Attorney General David Yost offered some grants through the state, competitive, mind you, with the process this spring, and actually rolled it out this fall. And if you know anything about ODE grants, the timelines are very quick, very, very quick. And I will tell you that Susie made it a priority to, not only to continue to run her building, but to make time to write a grant on behalf of each building in our district and work with the principals of the building and the Safety and Security Committee and with the members of law enforcement to make sure that she submitted the grants on time. Slovenia Schools was one of the top five districts in the state to receive a significant amount of money, and with an allocation of over $1 million. Just for the record, a total of 708 schools in 57 counties will receive $57.8 million in grant funding, and we have our share and our portion thanks to Susie here in Slovenia Schools. The money can be used for expenses such as new security cameras, which we desperately need, public address systems, automatic door locks, visitor batching systems, and et cetera. Susie, we are eternally grateful for your efforts, and your success in this financial endeavor is securing alternative funding for our district. We thank you on behalf of our board. We thank you for making sure that our students, employees, and families will be more safe for decades to come. Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to say because I don't have a voice, but I can say that these cameras will be more helpful than arming teachers, as Nina Greenberg so eloquently presented just a little bit ago. So thank you for the award. Sorry, I'm not going to say anything else.
Thank you, Susie, for all the work you've done on that.
Yeah, that's incredible, Susie. Thank you.
Mr. Feller and board members, I would like to recommend item 4.3, an MOA with SEA. I recommend the board approve the contract ratification between the Slovenia Education Association and the Board of Education for the period of 2023 through 2026, and I am thrilled to bring this motion tonight.
I will move approval.
I will second.
Any discussion?
I'm thrilled. Thank, this is incredible. Thank you for reacting so quickly, getting your members on board. I know the vote was big, and you know, we're excited to, I think it's great, we're going to move forward.
All right, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you. I recommend item 4.4. We have a host of overnight field trips to take place in the future. We have Southview High School teachers accompanying students to the Notre Dame Invitational for the Science Olympiad Tournament. We have Northview High School teachers also taking 30 students to the state Science Olympiad Tournament at the Ohio University, the Ohio State University, that is. We have our Northview High School choir director who is asking to take 17 students to the Acapella Festival. We also have a Southview teacher who would like to accompany 20 students to Worcester, Ohio for a speech and debate tournament, as well as a Southview teacher in addition for her second trip would also like to do or escort our students to Austintown for another competition for speech and debate at the state level.
I'll move approval.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 4.5, a policy for a second read and approval. This policy is in reference to therapy dogs in school.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend policy revisions for a first read. For item 4.6, these policies are regarding board committees, procurement of federal grants and funds in addition to extracurricular and co-curricular drug testing. And just for a first read, no action required.
Can we ask questions? Absolutely. I have a question. So with the committees, I noticed we're dropping the public records, does, is that just going to be Adam going forward?
That should still remain. The only change we noted, yes, the only change we noted was that two-party participants on the foundation board is now down to one prosecutor.
Right, but I would say for the ACE team, it's part of the collective bargaining that we have two. I think it says we have two, we have two board members.
For ACE.
For ACE, yeah.
Correct.
So we might want to add two to that.
Because there's one where it's not good catch for a first read. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's two, and Slovenia Community Action Team is Slovenia Prevention Alliance now.
They should change that to SPA. Thank you for that feedback. So SPA, and then ACE is two.
Right.
And then the foundation is changed to one.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments if you've had a chance, or you have until next week to give me more feedback as well, and we can make those corrections.
The Superintendent Advisory Committee.
Those are ad-hocs underneath is the way it was provided to me, but I'm open to clarification.
So what it used to be was Superintendent's Advisory Committee, that's the Finance Committee, the Communications, Facilities, those are the...
Are the ad-hocs.
That's what those are.
Yeah, I didn't think it was its own thing.
Yeah, that's not a thing.
So that needs to be altered, too.
Yeah. Yeah, those all go under that.
So remove, or I will add the...
So it should say Superintendent's Advisory Committee with those under it, so it would be...
Thank you.
Communications, Finance, Facilities.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Transportation, those go under there.
Got it. What are the changes to procurement?
It was just the change of $10,000 for micropurchases, changing it from 10 to 50. It gives us a little bit more flexibility when we get over that 10 grand, because we're a low-risk oddity, we will qualify for that. And it allows us to like, basically, we'll still do bids and we'll still get additional prices, but if we have, I'll use Chromebooks as an example. If Chromebooks, we have the same model of Chromebooks, you know, and we don't want to change because we fix them in-house and things like that. If that purchase is over 10 grand, technically, we have to take time to get, you know, three different quotes, which we know we're going to get in state pricing. So it just gives us a little bit of flexibility there, because 10,000 is such a small dollar amount.
Thanks.
Okay, next.
Absolutely. I recommend item 4.7 for approval. This is to enter into an agreement with Transcar for a transportation efficiency study in addition to Route Finder plus training.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Do we have a timeline on this?
We do. This will take approximately three months to complete. It involves both virtual and onsite of a review and audit of our entire transportation department. It's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, I was reading it, and it's, it looks very exciting. Are we going to get a written report, or will they come to a presentation?
Both.
Okay.
I noticed Phase Two talks about out-of-district transportation, and it wasn't clear to me necessarily what that meant, if it was just schools that were out of the district, but there's nothing in there about evaluating payment in lieu, which I think is something that we need to look at, and I understood it was going to be part of this proposal.
Yes, it will be. I will say that because this is a national company, that is a conversation I've had. When they come to our district, there are nuances for each state. That's part of the nuance for Ohio that we will be discussing, and already have mentioned it, in addition to how we serve CNPs, for example, and what that looks like, and other nuances that we are exploring. So it will be an overlook of the entire operation, from employees to their roles, to efficiency routes, to how we support special education students across the whole board, and how we use our Route Finder system.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for drawing that out, because it is important that they know that in payment in lieu of and other options that are specific to Ohio will be included in the review.
Have we ever had a comprehensive review?
Thank you for drawing that out, because it is important that they know that in payment in lieu of and other options that are specific to Ohio will be included in the review.
Have we ever had a comprehensive review such as this that you're aware of?
From my understanding, no, but I may have to turn to our board historian to know if anything has been done within the last 12 years. I think you're the one with the most authority around the table. Ms. Hoffman?
I don't recall.
I do not recall. I know in speaking to Doug Palmer from the Ohio Department of Education-- oh, no-- Ohio School Boards Association, he has not worked with the district in any capacity or OSBA to provide an audit or review of transportation.
And you said this is a nationwide company, and they do these studies?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 4.8 for approval, that our Board of Education enters into a service agreement with the Wood County Educational Service Center to provide services for the 2223 school year.
I'll move approval of item 4.8.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Tversky, are you here with you?
Thank you. I am recommending approval of items 5.1 through 5.3 on a consent agenda basis. 5.1, our licensed substitute teachers. 5.2, our licensed retirements. I want to thank Christina, Tammy, and Bridget for their years of service and dedication to the district, so thank you to those teachers. And 5.3 is licensed extra duty.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 5.1 through 5.3.
I will second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also recommending approval of items 6.1 through 6.5 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1, our classified new hires. 6.2 are classified personnel changes. 6.3, classified retirement. Want to thank Carol Smith for her dedication to the district. 6.4, classified resignations, and 6.5 is a resignation name change from last month's board agenda.
I'll move approval, items 6.1 through 6.5 of the agenda on a consent agenda basis.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Call the roll.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also recommending items 7.1 through 7.3 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1, our supplemental positions for the 2223 school year. 7.2 are stipends for the 2223 school year, and 7.3 is for an athletic volunteer for the 2223 school year.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through 7.3.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is board committee reports and announcements. So, I'll start with you, Kim. Do you have anything?
I do not have anything today.
Julie?
Yeah, I have several. I'm going to leave Slovenia Prevention Alliance for Tammy, but ACE, we met, that committee's going great. Everyone's really engaged. I'm sure we'll have more to report at some point. LMRC met for both OPEC and SEA. I have to say, I love the new format. They're very productive meetings, and those are going well. Foundation, the academic banquet will be March 17th, and we are moving forward without LDB marketing, and we're going to work on making a strategic plan for the foundation.
Okay. I was-- LMRC as well. You already touched on that. And Sajard, I don't really have anything new to report from those meetings. Jill, do you have anything?
Slovenia Community Services. Right at school, did a public presentation for their services and their program. Unfortunately, it was not as well-attended as I would have liked to have seen. However, what they presented was very informative, and I think parents will be talking to their friends, et cetera, about the after-school and before-school programs. They also had their holiday party this past week, and that went very well. That's all I have.
Great. Gary?
Last week, I had a meeting with some students at Northview on Northview's Diversity Council. They wanted to talk about mental health issues. It was a great meeting, actually. They have some really, I think, productive ideas, and what they would like to do is work with Southview to create a task force and then potentially present some ideas to the board. And these are ideas that I think are more focused on de-stigmatizing mental health so that the students feel safer about bringing problems to parents or staff members, whomever. So, it was a really great meeting, and I expect we'll be hearing more about that. As far as Slovenia Prevention Alliance, unfortunately, the president-elect has stepped down due to-- she's taken a new position, and there's a conflict of interest. So, the organization's going to be looking for a new president-elect. Their hot cocoa race is on for February 25th, and it's going to be-- there's a five-- this year, it's not President's Day weekend, which is great, because a lot of times, we've been out of town for that, but there's a 5K and a 10K. So, Greg, we expect to see you doing the 10K.
I'll do it.
Yeah. And the course is new this year, too, actually. It's going to be going more through Slovenia Township. So, that's all.
All right, now, this is the second opportunity for public participation for non-agenda items, and it looks like we have some.
It's Dan Greenberg.
All right. Mr. Dan Greenberg, you're up.
Board members and administrators, the federal mediator who often comes together and helps us set parameters for bargaining often says, "The most tense time, the time where trust is the thinnest between teachers and the board and administration is during contract negotiations. Depending on how negotiations goes, it can take months, if not years, for relationships to heal." With that in mind, I'm thrilled to be here with you today as we ratify the SEA contract through June of 2026. The SEA voted last week to accept the terms of the contract passed by a 96% to 4% margin. I don't know if a contract is ever passed by that large a margin in our district. It doesn't mean that every issue was resolved or that every teacher is enthusiastically in favor of every provision. It does mean that a vast majority of teachers felt ratifying the contract, with the terms presented was in their best interest, as well as the best interest of the district and the students we serve. It means that teachers would rather spend time, our time, working to improve relationships than be involved in potentially contentious bargaining. The process shows that we can work collaboratively to address issues and potential threats facing the district. It shows an understanding by all parties of the need to work together. Reaching this three-year agreement well before the expiration of our current contract has me feeling hopeful about the direction the district is heading. I want to say thank you to all board members for voting and supporting this contract and this ratification. I want to thank our administrators, Dr. Motley, Adam Koch, Tim Zeroff, Josh Tversky, as well as the board members who were in the room with us as we work towards this agreement, Julia Hoffman and Greg Feller, for meeting with the negotiations team, for taking our concerns to heart as we work to reach an agreement. I also want to thank Kathleen Teist, the SEA Vice President of Labor Interests, and the rest of the SEA negotiations team for their efforts, as well as our OEA consultant, Frederick Pruitt. Lastly, I want to thank all the teachers who had faith in the process, especially those who are here this evening, as a show of solidarity and support for ratifying the contract and for moving forward to meet the challenges we will face as we work to educate Slovenia's students and strengthen our school district. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, Denny Lyle.
Good evening. My name is Denny Lyle. First of all, let me thank you very much on behalf of Vicki. She's a little shy sometimes, but she certainly was a heart and the soul of the program. If you had an opportunity to read the 35 letters, which are usually only three or four for a nominee, she had 35, dating back to 1995 all the way through the present. But that's actually not the reason I'm up here. A moment ago, I heard of the approval of the debate team to go to Worcester, which instantly reminded me that last week I had received an opportunity to take my teams to Ohio State for a competition and to Cincinnati in the month of January. When we looked at the docket and given the timeframe, there was not enough time to get that 30-day approval process. So, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and would ask if you would consider giving me tentative approval to take a team, subject to my submission of the proper documentation, to go to those competitions. One is a Sunday competition to Ohio State, which is a one-day competition. We would-- we have funds, by the way, in the budget. There is no extra funds needed. And one is to Cincinnati, which would be an overnight. I know I'm catching everyone off-guard, including Casey Vens, who I did not have an opportunity to speak with. I tried reaching him by phone, but I couldn't reach him. But the programs have been closed out, and so we were never worried about submitting requests, and then we just got openings, more likely than not because of our reputation, there to come and compete. So, if there is any possibility of getting a tentative approval, subject to my documentation--
So, when would you be going?
There are Sunday competitions.
So, this coming Sunday?
January. It's January.
You still have time for the board meeting.
Do you have a meeting before then?
We have a meeting next week.
Board meeting weeks from today.
I mean, I'm inclined to give it to you tentatively, but we have a board meeting next week.
Okay, then I will get it taken care of, then. Okay, then, I didn't see that within the documents. I thought with the holidays, you might not, so. Well, then, thank you very much, and thank you again on behalf of my wife, then. I will get it submitted.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, next on the agenda, we will have a quick executive session for the purposes of compensation of an employee. I'll move that we go into executive session for purposes of--
Second.
--compensation of an employee.
You can't just demand it, Greg.
Right. Adam, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.